Call to order this special meeting of the Marion City Schools Board of Education. Will you please join me and stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It is my honor and my privilege that the next order of business tonight is the swearing in of three newly elected members of the Board of Education. It is no small thing to put oneself out there for public office. Very much appreciate all three of you doing this. In our republic, this is how it works. At the local, state, and federal levels, we choose representatives to make decisions for us. We entrust them, in this case, with the education of our children, for our own families, and for this community. I will hand this over to Jolene, our treasurer, who will do the swearing in of Tara Dyer, Evan Guyer, and Kathy Swanger. Congratulations to all of you.
So, are you doing them individually?
Yeah, we'll start with you.
Okay. So, I'm going to respectfully decline to be sworn in tonight because I don't feel like this is a legit meeting. I will postpone my swearing in until we have a legit board meeting, which will be coming up here soon. I feel that, number one, we did not have the proper notice to the public. I have copies of Twitter and also Facebook, which indicated the time in which those things were posted. I also don't think the president pro temp, who legitimately took office on January 1, has the power to call a special meeting. And the notices that went out did not go to the sitting board members at that particular time. I don't think Kelly McKay got a notice, and her term was up on the 31st, and I don't think Ted McKinnis got a notice as well. So I will respectfully, in this democracy, decline to be sworn in at this time, and will you honor me at the next meeting by swearing me in?
Yes. All right. Mr. Guyer?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you, Evan Guyer, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as members of the Board of Education of the Marion City School District, Marion County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is selected and qualified?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Kathy? Do you, Kathy Swanger, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as members of the Board of Education of the Marion City School District, Marion County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is selected and qualified?
I do.
Okay. Thank you very much. And Jolene, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Guyer?
Upstaying.
Mr. Guyer?
Here.
Mr. Ratliff?
Here.
Ms. Swanger?
Present.
Mr. Wibbling?
Here.
And the next order of business, as we've heard, and the only item for tonight, and we did not receive any public participation notifications, as far as I know, gotcha, is and since I'm the one that did call the meeting and I was sworn in as or deemed to be the president pro temp per the last meeting, I'll make the motion to reconsider the 100 Executive Drive lease. And do we have a second?
I'll second.
You call the roll, please?
That's discussion.
Or, excuse me, discussion? And here's, I mentioned this last time, that per the old lease, we had 180 days from June 30, 2024. Today is 180 days out at midnight. I had recommended that we wait until the newly elected board was sworn in so that the new board could make this decision. I had also wished, it's too late now, that we had discussed this much more publicly, perhaps two, three, four months in advance, so that the public could see what, if any, buildings and properties that we had looked at, what were our options, what was the price per square foot, the whole deal. I think it was a rash decision to approve it, knowing full well that a new board was going to be sworn in in January. I made it known that the newly elected board members, their term starts on January 1. If they could be sworn in on January 2, this was very much a reality. I do not apologize for that one bit. I think it is a responsible decision for this community, for this district, be it the teachers and the students and any of the rest of the staff. When we have the opportunity to save over $400,000 by not paying rent over the next three years, I think that's a wise decision to make, and I stand by that. Yes, there will be logistics that will need to be figured out, but I think moving forward that this is the best decision for our district, both staff, students, families, and the community alike.
I guess I was the second, so I'll go second, but I think we should reconsider the lease that was approved on the 18th, signed on the 20th, of whether this is fiscally responsible. I agree with everything that Mr. Wibbling said. Unfortunately, I don't agree with Ms. Dyer's position here tonight. The fact that Mr. Wibbling called the meeting as president pro temp, it gives him the authority to act as president until we have an organizational meeting. We do have a quorum, which is three members. We have four now. I hate that she doesn't want to take her oath. It leaves us without a board member and only active four board members until she decides whenever she wants to take that oath. And I think Mr. Wibbling, who called the meeting, didn't send notice to the two members because they would not be board members. Their term ends on the 31st, so sending them notice of a meeting that happens on January 2 is pretty pointless because they have no power to do anything. So I do believe we have a quorum. I do believe Mr. Wibbling has the power to go forward and call the meeting as our rule state because he is the active president until an organizational meeting, and that was decided by the previous board. So as president, he has called the meeting. I think we should reconsider for all the reasons that he has stated. I think it should be noted we should reconsider because the three members that were elected are going to be the ones that are here, whether it's the lease and the motion to reconsider and we keep going with the lease, or we do something else. These three members are going to be the ones that are here either at the end of the term or have to suffer through the consequences if the public decides that we shouldn't be here. And I think we should reconsider. I don't know one person that I've ever talked to in the public that thinks this lease is a good idea for the Marion City School District, except, I guess, the board members that voted for it. So I talk to public members all the time. It was part of when I ran that we shouldn't be in there. I think the three members had voiced, the three members that ran of the four that ran for this office coming up had voiced concerns about why are we at that building? We got plenty of room, or it's costing too much. There was various reasons, and they can talk about their reasons. But I think we should vote to at least reconsider it at this time.
So when you talk about reconsidering, have you thought about options? Like what other options are available?
Well, the first vote would obviously just be to reconsider, then we can talk about the options. So either we're going to, I think the first vote that he's calling for and made the motion my second is reconsidering the lease.
Because if we reconsider a lease-
Correct.
-and we have no place to go, it's sort of like selling your house without having a new home, which then it's really hard for an administration to administrate if they don't have a home. And whereas the public may not always know the importance of the administrative offices, those of us in education know the importance of that. So we have to make sure that there is a home base for everybody to work out of. And so to reconsider something, if we reconsider, and so we say to the county commissioners that we're going to reconsider this, then could we possibly lose that space? And if we lose that space and then we have no space, then where are we?
Well, I think, for me personally, I think we have rooms in this building, we have rooms at Grant, we have Colonial Acres. The administration thought the building downtown wasn't good enough for their needs, so they let that go. We have the old administration building that was used for years. We got offices throughout this district. I think it's just a matter of logistically where to put the administration. And make no mistake, it's not that I don't want administration to have nice offices. It's not that I don't want them to have a separate space. The problem is, as Mr. McKinnis had said before he left, we have a hard time building, meaning getting loans and so forth. So we have to more or less save some money. This allows us to take and save, and I would, I think there should be some discussion later, it's not on the agenda, but there should be some discussion later on saving that money to possibly build in the future an administrative complex or add on to someplace to put our administration. But for right now, I think we got plenty of space throughout the district. The district buildings, when they were built, housed a heck of a lot more students than we have today. In my entire tenure, when I was going to school, and even to this day, the administrative office over there on Church Street still exists. So there's a lot of places that potential administrators can go. And I still don't understand, as Mr. Wibbling had pointed out before, why our curriculum and student services are not in our buildings anyway, but that's a discussion for a later time.
And I guess that's where I am, too, in terms of the space. And like I said, logistically, there will be things to figure out, but I think it would behoove the board to assist in any way possible. But again, the price tag to me is the ultimate number, the amount of dollars that we can save over the next three years. And I do think it's feasible that we can house our current administration throughout the district and to have them not only within Marion City itself, but within Marion City School District, too. I think it's possible.
So we undermine-
I object, you talk.
We undermine Olympia.
You're not here.
We undermine Marion City Schools.
Ms. Dyer, with all due respect, you decline to-
Yeah, I did decline, but I am still on this board.
And I'm going to respect the process.
Just that I wasn't sworn in doesn't mean-
You can't conduct business until you've been sworn in.
I can't conduct business, but I can speak. Here's policy. You want me to underline it for you?
Go ahead and read it for me. Yes, please.
In a special meeting, as this.
And if I need to be corrected, I'm all for it.
You need to be corrected.
Okay.
In a special meeting, when a special meeting, you can't call a special meeting. So this is not a legit meeting.
Why can't I call a special meeting?
Because you did not take office until January 1. So this is January 2. So you're not really, you're president pro temp, but you called the meeting in December.
Did you have the opportunity to voice these concerns prior to this meeting that's now this public?
I know you're not saying that.
Absolutely, I am right now. Yeah, you could have reached out, Mr. Wibbling, this is inappropriate, you could have said.
No, I did say it was inappropriate.
Not until we got here tonight.
Yes, I did. I said, this is not a legit meeting.
Not prior to this evening, you didn't.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, not prior to this.
That was my argument, absolutely.
So because this is not a legit meeting, I can say-
It's a legit meeting. Keep saying it's not a legit meeting.
We'll follow that up.
You're setting Harding High School now in something. What do you call it? I call it a meeting.
I call this a group of people who have gotten together.
Mr. Guyer, would you like to?
I just, it baffles me. I've been in Marion for 40 years, and we've had this continuous game of musical chairs with our district service office. It just baffles me that we're having this conversation again this evening. Back when this decision was made four or five years ago, as a taxpayer and as an employee, I thought it was a terrible decision financially and culturally to move our highest people away from our most important people, which are students, our staff, and our community. Now, as a city board member that I take great pride and respect in, I can't in good conscience say that that's a great decision that we made or the prior board made three weeks ago. So I'm all for exploring options. Does that mean tomorrow we have to have a place for these people? No. Do we need a plan in place? Yes. But to sit here and say that that's the best decision for our students, our staff, our community, I can't sit here in good conscience and say yes.
Any other discussion?
I know we negotiated down from a five-year to a three-year. Is there any other potential to negotiate this? And I know, Olympia, I talked to you earlier today in the sense that we are leasing space off of a government entity because the county commissioners are the ones leasing the space. Can county commissioners make a profit by leasing to another nonprofit entity, which we are? So by leasing that, can they make a profit off of us in the process of that lease? Did you have a chance to look that up?
Well, I did reach out for legal, but I didn't get an answer by the meeting. But I will get an answer on that question.
Okay. Because I mean, I was just wondering, can we negotiate this down? I mean, everything's negotiable in life. So if we negotiated from a five-year to a three-year, can we negotiate the actual amount down? Or can we negotiate lower than three years until we can actually come up with a plan and have something that's viable for everybody?
So are there two questions there? Number one, can we renegotiate? Number two, would the county make a profit by leasing to us, correct?
Right. Are they making a profit? So if they're, when you look at this lease agreement, are they making a profit off of us is question number one. Because if so, I don't believe they're allowed to do that, which is why a lot of times people will lease buildings for a dollar a year because they're not allowed to make a profit. And then the second one is, can we negotiate a better deal to get a lower cost or lower number of years?
I'm sorry, I can't find your policy. I must have left it on my printer.
Any other discussion? Okay. The motion is to reconsider the 100 Executive Drive lease. And Jolene, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Wibbling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
No.
Mrs. Dyer?
Upstaying.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Okay. So the motion passes. And one of the rules with the special meeting, is it the only thing that can be discussed tonight, is the reason why the special meeting was called, which is the lease for 100 Executive Drive? I would like to add to the agenda further discussion for this because I don't want to cut this off right now because we are exchanging ideas publicly, which again is what I wish we would have been doing for the last three months, so I don't want to nip that in the bud. So I move to continue to discuss the 100 Executive Drive lease. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second. Okay. Further discussion. Correct me if I'm wrong, was the, and if we don't have the exact answer, that's fine. The wrecked building behind the police station, was that once our property? Were we, the whole dollar amount, was that something that was possible for us, too, at a time?
Right. So that belonged to Marion City Schools, and then Marion City Schools gave that to the City of Marion. And then the City of Marion, I believe in 2019 or 2019 or 2020, the City of Marion leased that to Marion City Schools for a dollar a year. I don't know if that lease went up, but I know at one point in time it was a dollar a year. So, and then I believe we gave that back.
Gotcha. So you have seen it happen in the past?
Yes.
Correct. Okay. Gotcha. In terms of moving forward here, to consider literally means to think carefully about something for an extended period of time, and that's what we are starting to do right now. As I said before, today marks, we are literally, I'm not joking, 180 days out right now. The lease expires June 30, 2024, 11:59 PM. And right now, it's what, 6:24, 6:25? To me, to literally reconsider it, to think carefully about all the things that have been brought up tonight, we either need to, and I'm fully aware that there was a lease, a renewal sign, and again, this is why I asked that we didn't vote on it last time and why I voted no, that the former treasurer, Veronica Reinhardt, signed on December 20, 2023, the intent of the former Board of Education, Marion City Schools, to renew this lease. So I just wanted to make the public aware that that document does exist. It was signed by our former treasurer, it was approved by our former board. I think the question now is, do we vote to and look into any legal ramifications if we decide to rescind this lease? Or simply to keep discussing it and look at our options, both internally and externally, what's available within the district, what's available outside of the district, and move forward in that manner? Do we have further discussion on any of that? Because we will ultimately need to make a decision, not necessarily-
Has anyone talked to the county commissioners to see what's going to happen with this?
Not on my own, no, I have not.
Because, I mean, as of midnight tonight, they could say, too bad, it's gone. And then if we don't find a viable space, then we're in trouble.
Well, I don't think we're in trouble. I think the administration, we have plenty of building space in our own buildings, but I think we got to reorganize. We got so much building space that we're actually moving students back here. We're moving students to Grant. We're giving up buildings. We got so much buildings that are empty. So, you know, quite frankly, we'll have the whole Colonial Acres, they can go over there for all I, you know, we still own that building. So it's good enough for students, it'd be good enough for our administration. So we have buildings. That will be a fully empty building shortly. Other than welding in the gymnasium, that's a fully empty building now, as far as I know. So we do have space, so there is no question we have space.
I know at the last meeting, there was a plan that was discussed about, you know, this was a, moving forward a three-year lease, and there was a plan also on top of that. Is that plan still in place? Is that plan still moving forward? What did that plan entail as far as what the administration thought was the best option once that three years was up?
Olympia, do you want to speak to some of that? Yes, she is. She was just recognized by the president pro temp of the board.
I made the recommendation that we go continue the lease because there is no plan. What I have suggested is that we're getting ready to do a strategic plan that involves multiple stakeholders. Our strategic plan is very outdated, over seven years old. So as I see it as superintendent, we need to go through that process, involve our stakeholders, and find out what's important to our community, which includes our students and our staff and our community partners, and let them decide what the priorities are. Because again, ultimately, building a new building is going to take money, right? It's going to take getting understanding from our community to say, we need to build another building, and we're talking about building a building not for students, right? So there is a process, and I think that it should be a collaborative process that involves going through a strategic plan and developing what are the priorities of the district. Because we don't really have a collective priority of the district because it has been so many years since we've actually worked on that plan. So I see it as you get through that, you develop what the priorities are, and then everything builds upon that. And as I've shared with many others, many school districts have what they call a long-term facilities committee, where they have someone who comes in and consults about how, what is the best way to expand, and is this the best decision? And where should you build your buildings, which we don't have in Marion, but we're trying to get to that point. So we're not there, and it's not going to happen in, you know, six months. So that was, you know, I made my recommendation last month, and that's what I think is best for the district at this time. I'm not saying that these things can't happen down the road. I think it does make sense, but there has been nothing built up into this point to get us to whatever that outcome is, whatever that long-term goal is. And I think that we should, since we already have this strategic plan committee coming up where we are going to have a stakeholder group finally come together and talk about what are the real challenges in Marion City Schools and not administration creating a plan, not the teachers in isolation creating a plan, not the board in isolation creating a plan, and totally ignoring what parents, I want them to be involved in this process so that they understand where we're going as a district. So it is a process, and I understand, you know, that many people don't understand how we're working, and I encourage all of you to come down and see what we do in our building. And you're welcome to come and participate in the collaboration that's going on, but I think it's leading us in a right direction for Marion City Schools. And to, you know, break this up, disperse everybody with no plan, I don't think that's what's best for the district.
The reality is, we have no plan. We've not had a plan, we still don't have one. There's been board members that sit right where I was sitting for over two decades, three decades, and we still have this problem. Okay? So we don't have a plan by saying, let's kick the can down another six months, a year, we still won't have a plan. She's just telling you that. We're going to kick it down and figure it out from community members. The simple fact is, the law designates the board to figure out what properties we're going to be in. This is our decision to make, and I understand we want to talk to the community. I've talked to the community, and I don't see anybody that is going to have us in some, hey, let's pay $160,000 or $170,000 a year so our administration can be way on the other side of town. I don't know anybody that is advocating for that. And I understand we're in a tough situation because we're here now, and prior boards leading up to here has not figured out a plan yet. But we currently do not have a strategic committee for buildings in place. That's not even a possibility. So the time we figure that out, we'll be halfway through at least time we start figuring that stuff out. So I mean, we need to either act or don't act. But I think, you know, making no decision, to me, is not an option. I think we got to move forward with actually doing stuff in this district, not kicking cans down the road. We are drowning in debt, we are drowning in poor test scores. This board has to take action and do stuff, period.
And in terms of the strategic planning committee with the stakeholders being involved, that, to me, if we can hand, and again, it might be a different group three years from now, but the money that we can save on rent, almost half a million dollars over three years by housing our people in our buildings, and if COVID taught us anything, it's that we can communicate without being in person. Do I, I like meetings face-to-face, I'm not a big Zoom and whatever else fan, but it's possible. We have proven that we can have meetings without being, you know, sitting across from one another. And if we can move forward with those plans, with what is developed over time with the strategic plan group, and we can give them over $400,000 to move forward with whatever plan comes about, I think that's the correct decision to make. But to me, in order to do that, we have to get out of this lease. And as far as I'm concerned, with today being 180 days out and the new board is still within the timeframe that was allotted by the old lease, I move to rescind the lease that was agreed upon prematurely, as far as I'm concerned. So I'd like to formally move that we rescind this.
I'll second that.
Discussion on that motion.
Do we not already vote on that?
Not to rescind it, we didn't, no.
To reconsider.
Just to reconsider. Yeah, different than, so this would be an actual, yeah. Like you said, county commissioners tonight at 11, at midnight, could say Marion City Schools regardless.
And I don't necessarily like this lease, okay? I'll go on the record with, I don't like this lease. It's always better to own than it is to rent because at the end of owner, you actually have a building when you walk away. Leasing, we don't, we have nothing, we're just giving money for a space. But with that being said, I also don't believe it's my job to come in and undo what's already been done by a board before me. So without a specific plan in place and without saying, you know, we'd like to do this, I mean, do I wish the previous board had said to Olympia and her staff, hey, give us three options and give us three good options of where we can go and what we can do and how we can do this? I wish that would have happened, but it didn't. So now we're stuck in this situation, but at the same time, it's not my, I don't feel that it's my job to undo what's already been done. It's my job to say, let's make a better plan going forward, but if- But if we rescind this, and then the county commissioners say, sorry, we have other people who want to rent that, see you bye. Then we're in trouble. Would I love to go in and renegotiate it? Yes. I would love to know how much they pay for that building and if they're making a profit off of us or not because the lease went up. I mean, what do I read, three and a half, two and a half percent? So it went up two and a half percent from last year? I'm pretty sure they're, the amount they're paying on their mortgage didn't go up two and a half percent. Their mortgage is set. So what's that two and a half percent going up? Again, are they making a profit off of us, and is that legal? I mean, there are questions I would like answered, and I would, again, like an attempt to renegotiate it, but I don't think that it's my job to undo what's already been done.
I totally appreciate your position. But if we're reconsidering, or we reconsidered, and now it's a motion to rescind, so if you don't feel that this is a good lease, you do have the opportunity tonight to correct, I guess, the wrong or the wrong lease or whatever. And I think, you know, it's always the right time to do what's right. And I think this board needs to really consider rescinding this. I think we need to rescind this. If you want to potentially negotiate further with the county, we can do that, but we got to get out of this, I think. And Mr. Wibbling's saying, I didn't do the math. He's saying it's the 180th day, and this is, I know in there you had to give them a notice of your intent. We've already signed some lease, so we gave them that. So we would have to rescind is the only way to do it and say we're backing out of what we previously told you we're going to do, which is not a good position to be in at all. But that's where we're at, you know?
Rescind in order to renegotiate?
Well, I mean, it could be rescind to just put them in our buildings, but I mean, you can't.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, either way. I mean, you could, both ends of the spectrum on that.
I mean, you rescind, you-
You have no lease.
You rescind, you have no lease.
And they would be fully within their right to, absolutely, they could.
And then-
Or they could know that we're looking for a different lease as well. And if they have nobody else, they're not going to want that building sitting empty, not making any money.
Well, she's saying they might not be able to make money anyway.
That's something worthy of finding out, yeah.
I don't know the answer to that.
That's a valid question that I think needs to be answered.
Yeah, I mean, to go against what was already voted on, not 100% in agreeance of that. However, as I sat in this seat tonight, given the opportunity to get us out of this lease and having a say in that is something that I want to explore.
I like the idea of rescinding to potentially renegotiate and see what else is on the table. But that's the only way, because if this has already been signed, they're like, no, you've already signed this. The old board signed it. This is what we're sticking with. I don't, I don't like that. That's why I voted against it the first time. Any further discussion? So we have a motion to rescind the 100 Executive Drive lease. Can you please call the roll?
Mr. Wibbling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swonker?
No.
Mrs. Dyer?
Upstaying.
Okay, the motion passes. We can and will discuss that further. Okay. Due to the nature of the special meeting, that is the only thing that can be discussed tonight. So we will adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion passes. We are adjourned.